It might have to default to Harry being presiding.
No.
I can't get the agenda to come up now. My shortcut every time I come in here. No, I just, I was like having it on here, so.
Okay, so due to the absence of the presiding commissioner, I'm going to appoint Harry Auger Otto to preside over the meeting today.
Please stand and report.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We're in a [inaudible].
Since his absence today, I'll be taking his spot. Do we have any minutes, reports received and filed?
No.
Do not. Commissioner Committee lays on reports, announcements of other upcoming meetings and events.
Traffic and Safety Meeting Thursday. Got a Board of Realtors Membership Meeting Thursday. Pretty slow week yet, so I think that's about it.
Okay, today I have a HCB Board Meeting in Columbia, but I think I'll do that by Zoom. Friday, a Chamber Leadership Forum. And just advice to all to stay tuned for any weather info updates. We've already gotten an email from the city asking us what we're going to do about the weather. It depends on the weather, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Wait and see, Melvin.
Under Presentations, we have a presentation this morning, and I'll let the presenter introduce herself and explain what we are looking at.
So I'm Katrina Williams. I'm a planner with City of Jefferson and Campo, which is the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. We do long-range transportation planning. And I know the commissioners are aware, you know, what we work on, but for others, it is an organization administered by the city that takes care of long-range transportation planning that goes out into other parts of Cole County, including St. Martin's, Taos, Wardsville, the City of Jefferson, unincorporated Cole County, a portion of it, and then a very small portion of Callaway County, and Holt Summit. So we go well beyond the city's boundaries on doing transportation planning. So I am here today to talk to you about the Capital Area Active Transportation Plan, which is a project we've been working on for the last eight to 10 months, and we should be done by the end of the summer. But we're looking at combining several plans together to create a more comprehensive plan for walking and biking and mobility and access in our area. I was going to have a PowerPoint, but I do have handouts if anybody would like one. I have probably about five more here if anybody wants one. And so I'll just kind of go through and talk through this so that, on that first page, and some of this is online on our project website, we've settled on our guiding principles for this project, which is looking at safety, diversity and inclusion, economic development, connectivity, accessibility, and community. So we felt these are all things that should be prioritized during this planning process. We've held several Steering Committee Meetings and done a lot of public outreach. We've had about 800 surveys responded to as part of our first phase of this. And now we're in our second phase where we have a draft network, our goals, and some other information that folks can provide us, comments on how we should prioritize our projects. So now that we have that draft network, we want to know, you know, what is most important to you whenever you look at implementing that network? And so we, I don't know how many of these slides are actually on our site, so I'm gonna, I'm trying to work through that. But we did find that, you know, roughly 75% of those who responded said that they like to have protected or separated facilities. And so those are anything from standard sidewalks to greenways to multimodal facilities like trails and side paths, cycle tracks. Those are all protected and separated facilities. That doesn't mean there's not room to implement other projects that would include, you know, things like traditional bike lanes that would just be paint marking on the roadways or signage. But generally, most people feel safest when they're protected and separated. That's also something that is, you know, expensive to implement. So this other page, it talks about level of stress and implementation. So generally, as people's level of stress decreases, as they're more comfortable, you would be implementing infrastructure that's usually more expensive. So that would be things like greenways and side paths, things that are eight to 10 feet wide and separated from the roadway. So that implementation's a little more difficult, but folks usually feel safer in those areas. Level of stress increases when you have more easily implementable projects. So, you know, painting bike lanes or putting in signage, those are more cost-effective. They're cheaper to implement, but depending on the user, they might feel less safe and more stressed in that condition. Now I'm just going to go to our project site, because I think that would be a little easier. So there is a link in the very back of this handout that takes you to our project website. For those who don't have this, you can go to www.jeffersoncitymo.gov/campo. And there is a link to the Active Transportation Plan. You can click on that, and it'll take you directly to this project page. And on this project page, it tells you about our guiding principles, but then it also goes into each type of infrastructure and what those infrastructure types look like that we're making recommendations to implement. As you go through this page, you can also take our survey, which I would encourage everyone here to take that prioritization survey. It's different from the initial survey we did. That initial survey was just a general, you know, asking folks what they want, what they need, what they like. This is asking you to really provide us with how would you like us to prioritize these projects? Do you want, you know, do you want things to be closer to resources like schools and medical care? Is recreation more important to you? Is access to your, to entertainment or grocery stores? You know, what's safety, accessibility, ADA compliance, all those things? So you can take a survey on here. And then as you scroll down, there's some interactive maps on the website. So we have two different interactive maps. One's looking at our sidewalk plan, and then one's looking at the bike ped plan. So there's certain infrastructure that's going to overlap, such as greenways and side paths, where you'd have people both operating a bike and then also walking. Sidewalks are generally for folks walking. And it's just a lot of line work, so we separated those into two maps. You can expand these, and then you can zoom in and out and look, you know, look at where these recommended projects are. So maybe I could pick one over here on, I'll pick one over here on Stadium. So the, so the city recently applied for a Transportation Alternative Program grant, which would be taking some greenway down Stadium. And so we have that line work estimated on here. You know, all of these lines are estimations of where we would like to put them, because you need to do engineering to figure out exactly where they go. But you can zoom in and out and see what those projects are. As you go out into the county, most of those projects are either some greenway connections on the edge of the city going into the county, or things like signed bike routes, or potentially lane, bike lanes that would be painted, which are, you know, challenging to implement given the space that's there. So I'd encourage everyone to, you know, to go out there and look at that. We did a lot of analysis on this project prior to hiring our consultants, so we are working with a consultant on this. We looked at where we have sidewalk and greenway and bike lanes and trails, and did some analysis on gaps, you know, where is it, you know, missing on one side or the other? Where is it in disrepair, where there's some significant gaps? Gave that to our consultants, and then they did a lot more analysis on suitability and trip generation. So there's a lot of analysis that's gone into this. It's also pulling in three different plans, really four. So we had a 2016 bike ped plans pulling from that, that Campo wrote. And then the City of Jefferson has a greenway trails plan and a sidewalk plan that we're pulling from, and then Holt Summit has a 2014 bike ped plan that we're pulling from. So we're combining a lot of recent planning efforts that have taken place in the last 10 to 15 years. So a lot of the line work and projects that are identified are already reflected in a lot of those plans, but we will also be providing some prioritization to this, which is absent in pretty much all of the plans. They talk about phasing in these, but they don't talk about, you know, where would you like to start first? What are your priorities? And then we'll also have cost bands associated with the final product. Right now, given our public feedback, the highest priority for our sidewalk implementation is connections to essential resources like grocery stores, medical care. Repairing the sidewalks comes in at number two. Connecting disconnected segments is number three. Connectivity to schools is number four. So those top four priorities are all, you know, kind of those core, you know, making sure we have access to those essential services and repairing what we have. For the bicycle and pedestrian network, that bike ped network, enhancing safety for all users is that number one priority. Again, completing connections and disconnects and gaps, creating opportunities for alternative transportation in the community, and then recreation is number four. There is a flyer at the very back of your, of this handout, and folks can take more, and I can give them to anybody if somebody wants some. But there is a QR code and a link that'll take you directly to that prioritization survey. It's a very quick survey, it's two or three minutes. And then there's also a link that takes you directly to these maps if you want to look at them. We'll probably have another Steering Committee Meeting in March. We've already had two. We've had a pretty good turnout for those, and we've done a lot of other public engagement. We went down to JC Living Windows, and we've gone to, we had two or three public meetings so far, so we'll continue to have those. So if anybody would like to attend that next Steering Committee Meeting, it'd probably be March 16th. You're welcome to attend. There's several people here who have been involved with that already. I think Kristi, unless Kristi left. Kristi left? Kristi's been involved, Eric's been involved, the commission members have been involved. So if anybody would like to participate, just let me know, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. That's a lot of information.
At the risk of asking an oh no question, we have property on Truman, and you're always wanting to expand or complete the sidewalks on Truman. Did we, did we think about this when we, we did? Okay, so we're going to have a sidewalk in front of Health?
We, the new driveway being built allows for a 10-foot side path? Is that the right term?
Yeah, it's greenway or side path, whatever you want to call it, yeah. I'm also learning the terminology a little bit too, because it's different than what we normally talk about.
That is planned with the new driveway, so it'll have the right cross slope, so that can go through now without impacting the new driveway that's being constructed now.
All right, good.
Is that the Health? Health Center, right there? Okay, yeah. And so we, you know, we have some line work that's saying it's needed, that's already in this plan, yeah.
Okay, good. Any questions, Katrina?
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Thanks for having me.
Thank you for the presentation. We will go to item seven, bids and contracts, signing of a NASPO agreement with Verizon Wireless.
You've already approved us to get Verizon Wireless cards for our vehicles with the new Prigapoint project. This is just another one of those agreements that we could get signed. There's no money attached to it, simple agreement. If you need to know anything else, Brian's here, he's going to have to explain, because I have no idea. But it's Brian approved.
I think, would I accept, excuse me, a motion to authorize the signing of the Verizon contract?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to sign the agreement with the Verizon Wireless for the NASCO agreement.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
It'd be nice, Jeff.
Sam's not here to break the [inaudible].
I know, I know.
Okay. Next, we go to the 2022 Bulletproof Best Grant Award.
This is the bulletproof best grant we get every year. This year it's for $6,600. It is a matching grant. I do have a transfer attached to this. I'd ask that you approve and sign this so we can get our bulletproof best for people.
This is an application, right?
Yes.
And so we have to put the money in there to show that we have the match money? That's what this action is for, right?
I believe that's correct.
So, okay. So I'll make a motion to sign the 2022-
Well, actually, it's an award, I'm sorry.
Oh, we do?
So we are awarded.
So we have to have the money in there too?
Right.
That's why we have to transfer with?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're going to sign the award. So I'll make a motion to sign the 2022 Bulletproof Best Grant Award.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Then we go to 2022 Local Law Enforcement Block Grant, LLEBG Award.
This is a JAG grant that we put in for and got awarded. It's going to, we'll have to do a budget adjustment since it's a revenue item. I think it's $9,000. Oh, sorry.
All right, make a motion to sign the 2022 Local Law Enforcement Block Grant Award.
Second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? I think we jumped down to the bottom one there in the group, the Huber?
Yes, sir.
At you yet, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead. Want to explain that one?
Yeah, I'll try. So this is a, this is a contract for Huber Associates to set up a DMZ for our Tyler Corrections Module. We have a public-facing part of this module that allows the public to access the C-Valves in my custody. The DMZ would set it up and put a buffer around it so that the, our network nor the city's network will be affected by anybody trying to hack into it. It's $3,500, and we're going to pay it out of our biometrics.
What does DMZ stand for?
Man, you asked me this on a pretty high, what does it stand for?
Militarize, though.
No, it doesn't.
That's in Korea. What's it stand for?
I even warned you before we came in here.
I know.
That's what it stands for. That's what it stands for. That's what it stands for.
Data mitigation.
There you go.
Yep, I made that up, but it sounds good.
All right, I'll make a motion to sign the contract with Huber for the DMZ.
Second, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Jump back up one to the approval and signing of DevNet renewal contract.
I'm here to present our renewal with DevNet for the next five years.
And then Jill's reviewed it, so.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve and sign the DevNet renewal contract.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any unfinished business? Seeing none. Counts payable, review?
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
To make a motion to approve accounts payable upon review.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item of business is an engagement letter with the Ruth Firm for assessment appeals.
The assessor is still recuperating from surgery and couldn't be here, so he asked me to handle this for him. This is the annual engagement letter with John Ruth at Newman-Commley and Ruth's to handle assessment appeals for the assessor's office. They do have a not-to-exceed amount. Sometimes we don't meet that during the year, and sometimes if there are a lot of appeals, we may have to go back and amend it. So, anyway, there's the space here, it says candidate Cole has Sam on it, but you can cross that out and just put, you know, just sign it if you want.
So this is not an addendum to a previous one?
No, this is 2023.
This is for 2023? Okay. So.
Sign it today. I'll make a motion to approve and sign the 2023 Engagement Letter for Assessment Appeals with John Ruth.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next order of business is the first reading of Budget Adjustment Number One.
This is for $6,600. It's for the Sheriff's Department. It's the other half of that bulletproof best that you guys did. I'll bring it back up in 10 days. No action today.
First reading of Budget Adjustment Number Two.
This is for $272,986. Again, no action today. This is the Health Department's grant that they submitted to you guys last week for the work site, workforce COVID enforcement. I'll bring it back up in 10 days.
Next item is the approval and signing of the 2023 County Aid Road Trust CART Agreement with the Missouri Department of-
Conversation.
Conversation, according, well, we may have to amend the agenda. It's conversation, conservation, but.
So this is our yearly agreement with the Missouri Department of Conservation for reimbursement of rock placed on county roads that provide access to the Missouri Department of Conservation areas. All expenses for road rock are reimbursed annually. The roads impacted are Monetalk Creek Road, Birdhaven Road, Claywell Road, Scott Road, Dawson Road, and Clyburn Road, which is not listed on here. It's in the agreement. This is approximately 7.74 miles of gravel road with total reimbursement cost, if we reach it, of $24,032.70. As soon as we get it signed into agreement, we can start charging all of that rock to the Conservation Department.
We don't do any in Osage City, or is that all Osage County through there?
We do not have any in Osage City, no.
That is Osage County, then.
On the, on the other, on the other side of Engineers Road, it does turn right there at the Conservation Department to Osage County.
Just a curiosity, you know what that number was a year ago?
That we reached?
Well, and maybe what we even plan to reach, just to see what the escalation might be.
So, and Debbie can correct me, but I do believe we were able to get the reimbursement for the complete $24,000 last year.
Was it the same number, the same dollar?
Yes. It's all based on our rock bids that we received from Capitol and Boone. So the numbers can vary a little bit depending on whether or not the rock bids go up this year, which we haven't received those bids yet. They're still out.
Okay.
All right, make a motion to approve and sign the 2023 CART Agreement with the Missouri Department of Conservation.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the approval and signing of sanitary sewer and general utility easement to the City of Jefferson for a multimodal transload facility.
We're getting pretty close to having this project wrapped up and out for bid, and this is one of the remaining components to get completed. So we will provide sewer service to the facility, and in doing that, we have to extend the sewer main to the facility, which will require sanitary sewer easement to the City of Jefferson. So don't have a whole lot of detail other than if you look at the back of the easement document, it just shows the area where it's going to be at relative to the property. So we will have to have this signed by a county commissioner, and it has to be notarized. So, and then we'll get it recorded and send the copy to the city. So I recommend approval.
So it's just an easement form that we're approving and signing?
Yes, it's an easement form. Sanitary sewer and general utility easement.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve and sign the sanitary sewer and general utility easement to the City of Jefferson for a multimodal transload facility.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. That was all in one breath.
That's good. Next item is ambulance purchase.
Good morning. So this is the approval of our 2023 budget purchase for our ambulances. So this is a buy-board contract quoted from Emergency Services Supply, Osage Ambulances. Total cost per unit, $27880 minus a $33,000 trade-in value for the units that we would be trading in. Total cost per unit, $237,880, which is roughly $70,000 under our budgeted amount for this year. Just asking for approval for two of those purchases. It is in our capital budget.
So we've got one.
We've got one. Two more will be delivered on February 9th.
And when will these be delivered?
Quarter four of '23.
Okay.
So, so that's one of the huge factors at play here, is that there's no other foreseeable way we would ever get an ambulance delivered by the end of this year if we were to go any other direction here, so.
Yep. I was just, myself trying to remind myself when we were beginning, I knew we had two more coming, so, okay.
Just, yeah, just a general question, the two that are being traded in, what's the vintage of those?
That's a good question. I believe 2010, 2014-ish. Do you know when those were manufactured?
Yeah, that sounds right, right? Each had about 210,000 miles on them.
So by time these get delivered at the end of the year, we'll be right at our 250,000-mile goal. They'll go to a nice new home, and we'll get some nice credit on them, so.
We've tried to, Purple Wave or whatever before, and we've never been able to get anything out of them.
Yep.
It sucks that you can't get more out of them, give them back, but that's more than we can get from anywhere else that we've tried.
Absolutely.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of the two ambulances.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Signing of Professional Services Quote with Huber and Associates for EMS 911 phone system.
So I'll take a book out of the sheriff's playbook. Brian said it's okay. But I think this is, Brian, feel free to step in here. As we join the 911 system, our communication center needs to be securely tied to the 911 system at Jeff Central. There already is kind of a fiber loop or connectivity in place. However, we need to create a secured avenue between both of those centers. So in order to do so, Huber and Associates has quoted us $175 an hour to perform that work. Do you have any idea how much, how many hours that might be?
I think it'll be, it's like there's a 160-hour on it, but it's going to be significantly less than that. So the only other caveat to that is just that there's going to be actually, we're going to need to purchase an interface card, because we're out of interfaces on that particular router. So I was hoping to have that pricing by today, but I think it'll probably be here, but it'll be here at this afternoon, so. So there's going to be, I don't know what that's going to come in at, but there's going to be an additional cost to the hourly, so.
There is some shifting within the project itself, so if these costs are not covered by some subtractions that we have within the project already, this is more than comfortable taking out of my capo, or my, out of my contingency this year. I ended up with a larger amount of contingency money than I had forecasted, so completely.
Just a question and suggestion, is this a one-time, a one-time cost, or is this ongoing?
It is a one-time cost.
Okay, we get this 911 wireless fee that we've been putting in the general fund for the last three years. We haven't spent any of that. For 2023, the budget for that is $106,000. We've got like $106,000 spent on 911-related. If John was here, he always said we should be spending this on 911 equipment.
This would be the textbook definition of 911 equipment, so.
Do you pay it out of this, do you pay it out of this fund, out of this account?
Would you rather pay it?
Uh, no. I will not raise any objections. Uh, no. I will not raise any objections. We're, there is money left over in the initial project fund, we believe, which was ARPA money. So if there is any balance, we could discuss what that balance is and figure out where that's going to come from.
When's the last time we used some of that fee?
We haven't used any of it. We've been accumulating this for three years now.
I didn't know if you said, or if I missed it, but-
Yeah, no. As far as I know, we, we've never spent any.
Sounds like we have the solution.
Suggestion.
All right. All right. We're good with it. I'll make a motion to sign the Professional Services Quote with Huber and Associates for EMS 911 phone system.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Is there a not-to-exceed amount?
Uh, not to exceed 60 hours.
60 hours.
Okay. Let's go to the resolution authorizing support of a TAP grant application. And we had to do this under an emergency agenda item because of late notice. So go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, and I appreciate, appreciate Jill and the county commission working with us to get this on the agenda. A little oversight in previous ones that we have submitted, it did not require a county commission resolution. This one did, and we just realized that last minute. So this application is due tomorrow, so I'll need to get the signed copy back today, if possible, which shouldn't be an issue, hopefully. Back in 2015, we built the sidewalk project tied to Pioneer Trail School to connect Business 50 up Pioneer Trail to Rainbow Drive. It terminated at Hunter's Run Road. And since then, we've considered options to extend that along Rainbow Drive up to the Terabella, not really Terabella subdivision, but Terabella Drive, close to Country Club. And this came about, the TAP grants are issued every year. For whatever reason, there was some leftover money to the tune of, I believe, about $1.5 million or so. And so they, MoDOT issued another round of requests for applications. So we looked at that and decided we'd go ahead and submit an application for that sidewalk project to extend from Hunter's Run over to Terabella Drive. It would be on along Rainbow Drive, possibly look at some inner, some traffic calming items as well in doing a crosswalk near Hinwick. Gave you a map showing the location, just rough location, and then also a total cost estimate. So this grant could be, if we get it, could be up to $500,000. So MoDOT, they require the county commission submit a resolution to support the project that would include project development, implementation, construction, maintenance, management, and financing, if approved for the funding. So that's what I have here. Worked with Jill to get the language agreeable, and it's signed by the county commission, also attested by the clerk, and the county auditor also will sign it. If we do get the grant, we would, we would have to match, the estimate is $681,000. That would be construction and engineering services. It's a 20% match, so if we got up to $500,000, we'd exceed the 20%. So we would be fine there. If we get the grant, I, I don't know the exact timeline of everything. Most likely, the money would have to be expended next year. But if for some reason we have to commit to it this year, we can use some contingency money to, to put aside for it. So, but we'll work through that if we're successful. The general feeling is that there's maybe an outside chance we get it, maybe not. But the fact that we submitted a grant this round will help us if we don't get it in future years, if we submit again. So timing was a little tight right now to get it in, but we're, we're going to do it, and we'll see where, where we end up. But if we aren't successful, we'll at least have a good chance to get it in later years. So, any questions about this?
Was there a pedestrian fatality along here within the last few years? Do you know?
I'm not aware. I do believe there was one at Country Club and Rainbow at that intersection that's on MoDOT right-of-way, and it was an accident that had happened. And the driver got out to do whatever, and that's how, and it got hit. But I'm not aware of one along Rainbow Drive.
Okay. And how did the engineer the crosswalk there? Is then, is that, does it have more to it than just a stripe across the road?
Uh, it has to, there's some cross slope requirements, 2%. We'll have to work through that. There may be some street reconstruction, minor. We would have to put the flashing lights activated or actuated, flashing lights. And in doing that, well, the reason why we want to put a crosswalk there is, once you get past Arden Drive on Rainbow heading east, it gets a little challenging to get something in to make it match with the driveway. So it'd be a lot simpler to put it on the other side, and it just will work better. And then ties to Terabella. We don't have to cross that Terabella. We're looking at Hinwick Lane. There's a lot of traffic at that intersection with Rainbow, and there's a possibility that we could implement a three-way stop with a crosswalk right there. So that would be some traffic, traffic calming that is becoming more needed, ties to the traffic safety study we did about a year and a half ago. So this all kind of comes together with this possible project, and then that traffic safety study rolls into it.
You'd find a lot of walkers out there, I think. There are no shoulders on that road, right?
No, it's, it's tight. No shoulders. It's curb and gutter. Either you walk all in the cur, in the gutter, or you walk in a yard, so. And I know Terabella, that subdivision, there's a lot of people that walk there. So this would be a nice connection, would take you, not all, all the way down to Bender Park, but would get you pretty close. Actually, you could get there if you'd go down on Business 50. You could get to Bender all by sidewalk or greenway.
Good.
Make a motion to sign the resolution for the TAP grant application.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That is the agenda as we have gone into this. And before we go into closed session, are there other issues to come before the commission this morning?
I just want to point out, it's Valentine's Day red, not Chief's red. So, I was wondering.
This is not cowboy blue, either.
I've got some sympathetic emails about cowboy-
Looks like 4900 red to me.
Okay. I'll make a motion to go into a session for, for, for section 6501, the revised statutes of Missouri under personnel issues, subsection 13.
Second, roll call.
Jeff?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Chief, will you put in a purchase order for that?
Yes. Let me give you the account, but who, who will-